I am well Brian, how are you this evening?
I'm doing fine, thanks for joining us tonight.
Absolutely.
Just waiting for everybody to get around, hopefully soon.
We've got time.
Yep, did you have a decent enough holiday?
I tried to keep it very quiet.
We did too, I think everybody did.
And I actually did get a couple of days, I would have really liked to have a couple of more uninterrupted days, but it's pretty hard to do that and stay in town.
Oh yeah, yeah I'm sure. Yeah, I had to work most of the holiday, but it wasn't too bad, it was pretty quiet. I work for the federal government, I work for the US Department of Agriculture.
What do you do for Ag?
I actually work information technology, so I don't do anything actually in Montana Wyoming, I'm just lucky enough to live here, I mean not much.
Will you make sure that everybody can do their work, that's what you do?
That's exactly what we do, yeah, we do all the long haul communications, so we buy all the circuits and the cell phones and the phone systems and all that stuff, so yeah, it's a good gig.
Good.
And they let me do it here.
For sure.
Courtney, how do you pronounce your last name, is it Lawwellan or?
Lawwellan, it's as if it had two Ls, a Y, a W, and more double Ls. It just got changed a little bit between New York and Montana by way of West Virginia and Kansas.
Oh yeah, I know that goes, I decided it'd be kinda cool to have a Law Ellen.
Yeah, the coincidence is not lost on me.
Yeah, I'm sure, I end on others. Hey Courtney, do you mind, I was kinda thinking for the agenda when we get to your portion, we moved you to the very front so that you don't have to sit through the whole thing today. We obviously have public comments first, but what I thought I'd do to kick it off that part is maybe just have you give a kind of a brief explanation of your thought process on the decision that was made to not include Jonathan Hedinger, and then if you'd be willing to open it up to questions to anybody on the board and then questions from the public, would that, would that be alright?
Works for me.
Okay, I don't, and I don't know what to, I don't know what to expect this evening in that regard, but it was definitely a fairly spirited discussion last week.
You betcha.
Thank you. Hi Stacy, I don't know if you can hear me?
Oh, I can now, I wasn't sure there.
Also, I'm also on the conference so far is Courtney Lawellin, who's the City Attorney.
Good evening Stacy, did you see the commission meeting last night?
I tried to get on, but I couldn't, I didn't do it right, so I couldn't ever get in.
Just to let you know that the commission voted to exclude the old office property in the new map, so you guys are out of LBID.
Okay, thank you.
Of course, that's exactly what that protest is for, it worked perfectly.
Well good, after all it is a residence now.
So, right, right?
Hopefully, it will remain that way, you never know.
Oh, and they also approved a zoning change right next door to it, to the left, they're gonna put a dog pound in there, I don't know if you heard that Stacy?
What? I think there was already a dog kennel there. Dog washing business.
I don't know, a bunch of loud dogs, that's all I heard, it's good for your property value.
I hope not. There's enough dogs in the neighborhood as it is, and you do hear them barking.
Oh yeah.
Dogs bark all around town, especially when you walk by on the sidewalk.
Oh my god, that's something, I do a lot of walking in town, I try to do it almost every evening, and I can tell you which, well I think it's just sort of because Bozeman's sort of, or sorry Livingston has this thing with having fences right up the sidewalk and the dogs are there, and most of the time it startles them as much as you I think, and.
Yeah, and they jump off on the fence.
Oh yeah, I know which dogs are gonna bark at me when I kinda walk by.
Almost like you can make a zigzag, you know, you go across the street to avoid that dog, and then you go back across the street.
Yeah, well that's why I took down, and when we moved into our house, we had a fence too that went all the way up to the sidewalk, and I just go, I don't want, it doesn't look very inviting, I'm gonna move our fence all the way back.
Ah.
So we tore down the front and then moved it back.
Do you have any dogs?
We have one, she's not really a barker, I mean she'll give a woof, but that's about it.
Matthew, how was your Christmas?
It was not too bad, thank you, it was very mellow, I was hoping to get outside and do some winter type stuff, and.
Weren't we all?
I think so. How was yours?
Quiet, quiet, we got one day skiing in Yellowstone, cross-country skiing down to Tower. It happened to be a good day where the sky was actually blue, there was sun, which has been another scarce item this summer.
We went there this last weekend as well, up there by Tower, care cross-country skiing.
Did you, did you go to Tower, or where did you go?
Oh yeah, we went up Towers, up just up the road there, up to the falls.
Up to the falls, that's what we did, so it was, it was nice to get out.
Looks like it's been snowing down there a little bit this week, so hopefully it'll be a little more covered soon.
Yeah, I heard that Mill Creek still doesn't have a whole lot of snow either.
Yeah, I went down there and walked it a bit last weekend, and you can cross-country ski on the roads.
Yeah.
I mean it's an inch, half an inch, the only reason you can ski it is because it's really hard pack on the roads and there's nothing to stick up through the snow. I went up the backside of Emigrant, up Emigrant Creek, and there was no way you were gonna ski that.
Well, we gotta get more snow because since we can't do anything else, at least if you're outside, you can go skiing, but the snow's been so bad, you can't even go skiing.
Yeah, I even tried to go skating and that didn't really work out either, so it's been a tough start to winter for me.
Yeah, I know, my son was here for three weeks and I think all he could remember, well he never could remember how much the wind blew, and you know, we had all those 50 to 60 mile an hour winds day after day. So, he was more than ready to go back to Charlotte, North Carolina.
Yeah, my sister went home to Vermont for Christmas, and they had gotten a bunch of snow, and then I talked to them all on Christmas and they said it was pouring rain, so I wasn't too upset that I didn't go back.
Yeah, right, oh my goodness.
Hi everybody, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Well, it looks like we about got a quorum, I got a 1217 number, I don't know who that is, oh, I won't invite them yet, we'll sit here and wait another minute, see if, let's see, we're missing Shannon and Tori. We'll give it another couple minutes. Boy, not many people here considering the last few meetings we've had, fisky. Slackers, they got soft over the holidays.
Yeah, they've all got amnesia.
Yeah.
Hi Taya.
Hi, there's Tori.
Is it Taya, it is, that's how you pronounce it?
Nailed it, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Welcome and congratulations on your position.
Yeah, your position too.
And Tori, once she can hear us, if you would, acknowledge, and then we'll go ahead and get started. If you can hear me, great, hey, how's it going? Okay everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and admit the rest, there's not a lot of folks here in the room, and I'll keep an eye as usual on letting folks in as we start here, so bear with me, oh, there's Shannon, so good, love everybody here. And we have, there we go. Okay, it looks like we have everybody admitted, we will go ahead and get started, start time is 5:32. Welcome everybody to the Meeting of the City Planning Board for January 6th. Boy, I put the wrong date on there, look at that, 2021, I wasn't used to doing it yet. Well, I did the agenda in December, so I guess that's my excuse. We will first start off with roll call, so let me start with that. Let's start with Shannon Holmes.
Present.
Melissa Newt.
Present.
Stacy Jovic.
Present.
Jesse Wilcox.
Present.
Tori Lyons. Taya Cromley.
Present.
And I am Brian Conkle, the Chair. Also, just wanna recognize the presence of Matthew Menard, who's the Deputy Planner, excuse me, the Deputy Planning Director, and Courtney Lawellin, who is our City Attorney, who's gracious enough to join us this evening to help with any Q and A, when we talk about the resident freeholder issue that is on the agenda today. Okay, so before we start with public comments, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 16th meeting, please?
I motion to accept the minutes from the December meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye as well, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes, minutes are accepted. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments, so I will ask members of the public that are here if they would raise their virtual hand in Zoom, so again, in the lower right-hand corner, you should see three dots and be able to raise your hand, and you will be recognized, you'll be asked to give your full name and address, and you'll have four minutes to make your statement. After we've gone through all the people that have been able to raise their hands, we'll go through, and if there's any people that are on the phone only and aren't able to do that, we'll see if they have any comments, so I will open it up for public comments at this time, any comments?
Hey Brian, this is Ken Cochran, I have comments and I don't see my raise the hand thing.
Okay Ken, if you would then, just please state your name and address and you can go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Ken Cochran, a co-founder and board member of the Friends of Park County, my address is 60 Majestic Ridge Trail, Livingston. Friends of Park County is grateful that the Planning Board has requested and received permission to take additional time for your deliberations on the draft growth policy. At your last meeting, you suggested that you would devote the first meeting in two weeks of your deliberations on the growth policy to the territorial jurisdiction area, that's a mouthful. This would include the related maps showing future growth area and future land use maps in both the growth policy and Appendix A. Friends of Park County recommend that you consider allowing two full meetings to these topics because of their centrality to the overall growth policy and its multiple and complex relationships to the city's growth. Here's a list of some of the issues related to the ETJ area, including many that are unique to these lands, deciding whether or not any of the land in the ETJ is needed for future growth and development over the next 20 years. Friends of Park County's position is that a simple analysis will show that none of it is needed if the city limits remain the same. Whether or not to identify areas for possible de-annexation and the policy basis for the de-annexation. Whether or not to identify areas for possible annexation as the first step for development of these lands. You also need to describe at a high level the kind of analysis needed required to justify the annexation. Reconciliation of these land use policy choices with other policy statements regarding the provisions of cities' facilities and services such as road, water, sewer lines, police protection and the like, or any future growth areas outside the existing city limits. Mapping and rural zoning designations for various areas within the ETJ. One, agricultural zoning for farmland of statewide significance and other land most suitable for raising crops or livestock. Two, residential zoning for areas of existing rural settlements that wish to remain both rural and residential with little or no additional development. Hazard overlay zonings for areas at risk of flooding or wildfire and steep slopes where development would be hazardous. Groundwater depletion of contamination hazard overlay zones to limit or prohibit additional types of development that would reduce or pollute groundwater used and needed by current residences and businesses. And fifth, wildlife and natural resource conservation zones for areas with important wildlife and natural resource values, including most primarily the Yellowstone River corridor. Two meetings are going to be needed, we believe that once you addressed these issues, you will have tackled the most complex and controversial issues, and many of your other decisions will flow more easily from the decisions you make at those two meetings. Thank you for your time and service, and we look forward to helping you with your busy, but we hope happier New Year, thank you.
Thank you, Ken, just to let you know, we received your written, your public comments in writing earlier today as well, and those have been distributed to all Planning Board members.
Thank you Matthew. Brian drew Matthew.
Alright, okay, if I could, if I could ask everybody to please put your microphones on mute unless you're speaking, we've got quite a bit of background noise there on that last bit, thank you. Okay, we will continue with public comments, so I'll call again to see if anybody has any public comments, if you would, please raise your virtual hand or announce yourself, we have a pretty small group tonight that we could, as it grows here. Is there anybody else that may like to make a public comment?
Brian, this is Jonathan Hedinger, and I was just wondering if now's the appropriate time to talk about the resident freeholder issue?
Um, yeah, well Jonathan, let me, so one thing that we do have is, we do have the City Attorney on here, how about if you make, if you have any public statements about that, to go ahead and make them now? I've already talked to her, and she said that, just to let everybody know how we'll handle that, is I'll ask her to, when we get to that agenda item, I'll ask her to talk about that and the decision, and then the board will ask her any questions we may have, and then she's open to any Q and A then, so I'd recommend if you wanna make any public statements in this regard, to go ahead and make them now Jonathan.
Sure, Jonathan Hedinger, 519 West Park Street. I just wanted to comment that I appreciate the Planning Board for taking this issue on after the discussion at the last meeting, and I think that, again, as I outlined at the last meeting, I think that the idea of needing to own land in order to participate in the Planning Board is an outdated idea that it doesn't seem to be legal, and many cities and counties across the state have decided not to follow that old state law because they view it to be discriminatory, discriminatory and likely uncompetitional, and I just think that it's important to have it different. The community, a community like Livingston where land prices are really expensive, housing is really expensive, I think it can be really difficult for a lot of members of the public to be able to own land, and I think that it's important to get their opinion and include them in the planning process, so I just wanted to say that, thank you very much for taking this issue on, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll open it up again for any other public comment, if so, please raise your hand or announce yourself. And second request for any additional public comment?
Hey Brian, this is Michelle Ubiraga, 711 Lockleaven Drive. You know, I was thinking we would be chatting about the freeholder statute in the agenda, so I'm happy to hold comments until that time.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, one thing, I'm not gonna turn it into a conversation, it'll be just questions, we'll give members of the public any opportunity they wanna ask specific questions, so yeah, so if you wanna make a statement, it's probably better to make your statement now.
Okay, yeah, I mean I'll just, you know, this is a comment or a statement, because I think that you all have heard from previous meetings, and I submitted comments to the City Commission, which I'm happy to forward to you all, just reiterating my concern that not encouraging the city to take a second look at the statute and whether it's appropriate to enforce an unconstitutional statute. I think there's really strong evidence that the statute violates equal protection under the law, the First Amendment, and then potentially the right for public participation, so I think that it is really important that you as a planning board take a hard look at that and make a recommendation to the City Commission, and I hope that they decide that that statute. I hope that they decide that that statute is out of date and unconstitutional and we should not be enforcing it here in Livingston. I think that the point that Jonathan is making that renters should have a seat at the table is really important, especially when we're faced with a potential housing crisis. We're eliminating and excluding quite a few really important voices at the decision-making table. And then I also wanted to let you all know that, um, you know, I have reached out to a community across the state to learn more about the statute, including talking to a law professor at University of Montana and the Land Use Clinic there. So I think there, there are opportunities for us to engage a broader community and learn what other communities are doing about this issue in order to decide the best path forward for Livingston. And like I said, I hope we can have a productive conversation and resolve it this way versus litigation doesn't seem, not an advisable path, I wouldn't, I don't think, and Courtney probably agrees. And then I wanted to let you know that I have been contacted by at least one really, you know, important member of our community who let me know that she saw that statute and was really discouraged, had considered applying for a seat on the Planning Board and didn't as a result. So I want you to know that the, I think the impact of that statute reaches far beyond just having somebody apply and learning that they weren't eligible, that we may be not seeing applicants as a result of that. So, um, thank you so much for your time and I look forward to the conversation and really eager and excited to take the next step in 2021 and see how the growth policy unfolds, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, checking to see if there's any other individuals that'd like to make a public comment. Second call for any public comments. And third and final call for any public comments. Okay, public comments is closed at 5:46 PM. Thank you everybody for your inputs, we appreciate them. Okay, going back to the agenda, excuse me, I got a little frog in my throat today. This is an old agenda, excuse me. Well, I'll just go with this one, but we did publish a new one, sorry, this is the, this is the old one. We, we moved the resident freeholder conversation to the beginning because as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, city attorney has joined us and wanted to make sure that we could have her start without having to sit through and listen to the rest of the meeting. So, so we'll go ahead and start with city attorney Courtney Llewellyn. And again, Courtney, if you could, start us off by, if you would, discuss the resident freeholder requirement or statute and also explain the rationale in the city decision to not include renters in the eligibility for the Planning Board membership, please.
Let's unmute, that's all.
There you go, he's just gonna, just gonna make you laugh.
So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a little, uh, I'm gonna give you a little law school lingo, mostly to entertain Michelle. So there's a thing that they teach us to do, um, a way of looking at an argument. And the one we usually get is, is Iraq issue rule, uh, argument and conclusion. So the issue of course is, as you stated on your agenda, the rule is in 76.1221 and also in City Code 27-3. And since they almost parallel one another exactly, I'm gonna just read the membership portion out of the state statute. Of course, we start with Constitution in our hierarchy of law, federal then state, then our statutes, then our city codes. And we don't want them to conflict, so we generally try to make them align. City Planning Board shall consist of not less than seven members to be appointed as follows. One member to be appointed by the City Council from its membership, and that would be Commissioner News. One member to be appointed by the City Council, who may, at the discretion of the City Council, be an employee or pulled public office in the city or county in which the city is located. And that would be Mr. Holmes. One member to be appointed by the mayor, or in this case, the city manager or the chair of the board, upon the designation by the county commissioners of the county in which the city is located, and that is our newest member, Taya. Welcome. Then there are four citizen members to be appointed by the mayor, two of whom shall be resident freeholders within the urban area, if any, outside of the city limits over which the Planning Board has jurisdiction under this chapter, and two of whom shall be resident freeholders within the city limits. So that is the membership that's required by state statute. And then there is almost exactly parallel language within 27-3. And the, the, the small difference is that the four citizen members are resident freeholders within the city of Livingston, who be, who shall be qualified by knowledge and experience and manners pertaining to the development of the city and hold no other office in city government. So those are certainly, I think, good terms. And I know that the, the issue is with the freeholder requirement. So let me go back and do a little bit of, um, additional explanation. Let's see. So the freeholder requirement and the word freeholder actually come from the, the term fee. And it's a way in which we hold title to property. So in English law, which is a lot of where our property law came from, fee simple or fee simple absolute is the updated term. And by updated, I mean about 500 years old of, of an estate and land. And that came, the, the word fee is derived, is derived from the word fife, which was in feudal landholding. And the tenants, because the, the king or the designee of the, the sovereign was granted ownership of the land. And then whoever served them, served them in fiefdom. And so they had to do certain things. Sometimes they had to require or provide services in times of war or acting in a ceremonial capacity or simply working the land. And there is a term that, for any of you who are property owners, you own your home in fee simple. And fee simple means without condition attached to your tenancy. So that's where that came from. And as an extension of that, the worm, the, the word freehold was the form of ownership in which you had fee simple ownership. So that is the, the law school stuff that I haven't looked at in ages and ages, but it was kind of fun, fun to look at again. So the short answer to your question of why the city is taking the position that we are is because it's the law, both the state law and in our city code. And I think the, the longer answer is this. There is a requirement, and Michelle's not wrong about there being an equal protection requirement. But equal protection standards have different levels of scrutiny. And where there was an equal protection difference, where that, there was a difference in the law that is based on, um, a, a standard for race or sex, there is a heightened standard. Where there is not a protected category that's at issue, the standard is rational basis. And that means, is, is the requirement in the law rationally related to the purpose that it serves? And in this case, what, what land use planning is, is it's regulating the use of land. And that land is owned by people. And the Planning Board is recommending regulations to be imposed by the commission over land within the city limits. So if the people who are, are charged with doing that are required to own land because it is land that is being regulated, there is a rational basis between the fee hold requirement and, and the law. And so in the Montana Supreme Court case that we looked at, and, and it's the one that is closest to being what we call on point, they talked about equal protection and they talked about distinguishing between citizens on an arbitrary basis versus a rational basis. And that the law doesn't prohibit apportioning representation based on all distinctions. And that there, there is a reason sometimes to give greater influence to those citizens who are more affected. And that freeholder requirements are used to prevent, were they, were used to prevent minorities from consideration for appointment to a general government board, that violated equal protection under any standard of scrutiny. It did not, however, exclude the possibility that other circumstances might present themselves in which a property qualification for office holding could survive constitutional scrutiny. And that's a 1995 case out of the Montana Supreme Court. So between the rational basis and the legal requirement, that is the basis for the city's, the city's position. But I want you to take a look at the first, the first sentence of 76.1221. And, and I want to stop for a second and just go back very briefly. So the city of Livingston is a general powers government, not a charter power government. General power set means that we can do anything the law says we can do, but we cannot go beyond that. A charter government, on the other hand, can basically do anything they say we can't do. So anything that's not prohibited to a charter government is something that a charter government can do within the bounds of, of other constitutional and statutory provisions and applicable laws. But, uh, so that's, that's the basic difference there. So we looked for a, a place where it allowed us in the law to do something other than what was under 1A, 1B, 1C and 1D. And so the first line says, "The City Planning Board shall consist of not less than seven members to be appointed as follows." So the, the legal requirements within 76.1221 are the people who are on the board now. The not less than allows for, under general powers, there to be a change that could include people who are not freeholders. So that's possible, but we have to change our law in order to do that. Questions?
Yeah, let me go ahead and, we'll go ahead and start with board member questions first. So, um, let me just call out everybody just so we don't step on each other. And if you have a, if you have a comment, please, or a question, please ask, if not, just pass. So Shannon, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you Courtney for an excellent explanation.
Okay, you're breaking up a little bit there Shannon, but we got, we got you. Melissa, do you have any questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Stacy, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So at the end where you said that there was a possibility of a renter being on the board, my, and what I heard you say was that, but that would only happen if the law was changed?
It was only if our law was changed. So our, our city code, right, our city code, our ordinance that sets the Planning Board is a mirror of 76.1221A through D. But we have the ability to add an E and add, I would suggest two, since we want to keep it at perhaps an odd number, who do not have to be freeholders.
Okay. And is that, is that something that recommendation would come from the Planning Board or because it would have to be taken up by the City Commission? Is that correct?
Correct, we would have to do it through an ordinance change. And I believe that we would very much wait and appreciate, wait for and appreciate a recommendation by the Planning Board for such a change, if in fact, that's what you want to do.
Okay. That's all, that's all I have for questions.
Okay, thanks Stacy. Jessie, do you have any questions?
Um, I guess I just, thank you Courtney, and thank you Stacy for that question because I think I had the same one. So really what we would be recommending, if this board wanted to request the change of the commission, would be to request an ordinance change and add section E to 76 dot 1 dot 221, something like that, Courtney, is that what you're saying?
Um, it would actually be, you would be asking to add a fifth. So ours is 70, 27-3, Membership of Planning Board Terms of Office and Qualifications. And then it says, "A, the Livingston Planning Board shall consist of seven members as follows." And then it lists the one, or the A through D and as one through four, so we could add it as five.
Oh, okay, so add it as five, okay, perfect, thank you. You bet.
Okay, Tori, do you have any questions?
I think that my, my question was primarily answered, but this is maybe just more interested in the, in the theory. But might the distinction between Livingston and some cities within Montana be the fact that this, this explicit requirement is in the city code? And not, and it's explicit in the city code and not just the Montana code?
Let me see if I understand your question. I think what you're asking me is, is the reason for the decision because it is in both the city code and the state code versus where other cities may have amended their city code that extended beyond what the state code required? Is that right?
That's right.
Then the answer to your question is yes.
Great, and, and thank you for your very thorough explanation, that was fascinating and I think it covered everything.
I'm glad nobody fell asleep.
Okay, thank you, Taya, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, just a couple, thank you Courtney, that was super helpful. So are you suggesting then that it would, we'd also change not less than nine members?
Yep, we would need, yeah, well, actually it says, so the not less than is in the state code. Ours says, "Consist of seven," and we could just say, "Consist of nine."
Okay.
But I'm not making a recommendation, I'm just telling you that's how we could change it.
Got it, so, and then with the E, point E, any of the, any of those individuals could be freeholder, sorry.
Well, they would, I would say they should be citizens of Livingston, I think that's important. But that they would not be required to be, uh, freeholders. That could absolutely be there, yes.
Thank you, you bet.
Okay, and I do not have any questions, you definitely answered all of mine and more. I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the public now for questions. But again, these are questions only, please don't make any comments or this isn't a back and forth. So if you have any comments, please identify yourself. And, and then go ahead and ask, ask Courtney any question you have.
Brian, can I ask a question really quick? I have a question now, it's Melissa.
Okay, Melissa.
Um, I just want to make sure I'm following Courtney. So you're saying that with our municipal with our municipal form of government, we should, that you're saying the best option is to add members with the nine minimum and no freeholder requirement? And I think you're also saying that if we wanted to write the entire code differently, we'd have to be charter form of government? With that very complicated way of how the MCA interacts with local code, is that right? Like if we were charter form of government, we could write it differently? Is that what you were saying?
I don't know that it necessarily makes any difference in this instance, whether we're charter or general powers in adding two board members who are not required to be fee holders because that doesn't step outside of what that is. But being a charter form of government definitely gives us more freedom to be creative. Um, if not in this instance, in lots of other instances.
Right. So you're not sure just about the freeholder aspect and how, how exactly that would play out if we were charter versus how we are?
So it doesn't change the rational, the, the charter form of government does not change the rational basis related to the requirement. And it doesn't change um, the fact that there are, there is the ability to add people to the, to the board outside of the seven required by statute. And there's no requirement in there that they be freeholders.
So the point of bringing up charter, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Like, so what you're saying is that charter form of government doesn't necessarily impact this at all?
That, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cuz it has, like you mentioned, it's come up a lot of times with other codes, so I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay, thank you. That was, that helps. Thank you.
Okay, uh, again, I'll open it up uh, to the public. If you have any questions for Courtney, um, please announce yourself or raise your hand. Second call for questions.
Hey Brian, this is Michelle.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, recognizing this is not a place for debate. So um, I think that Courtney and I just have a different interpretation of the law. So I'm not gonna um, uh, propose any alternative views. I just would be curious, Courtney, how you square the decision out of other jurisdictions uh, that have found the freeholder requirement in the law to be unconstitutional under the Montana Constitution and the US Constitution?
So the, the um, Missoula District, the fourth judicial district decision is different in a couple of ways. Um, it's different because the city seated the member um, and then somebody protested afterwards. And so the, the challenge to it was, was different uh, in form. Um, and it was never moved beyond uh, the fourth judicial district. Um, and so the judge is interpreting their law in their case against the arguments that they made, and it never went any farther than that. Um, and I don't, I don't find it persuasive when the thing being regulated is land and the membership that's required, and not limited to, but required under the law, is our landowners. Um, and that, that relation between those two things is important because if we take the argument that I've heard to its natural conclusion and simply remove the freeholder requirement, then everybody on the planning board could be an individual who didn't own land. And that would, under the law, be acceptable, and there would, there would be no requirement uh, related to the thing being regulated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions from the public? Second call for questions. And third and final call for questions.
Brian, I have one, one final question, and this is to you and the potential members of the planning board, just um, I love to hear if you all who I, I really respect and trust in, you know, leading our community on planning have um, done any research yourself into the troubling and racist roots of the term freeholder? And whether you think that this might be an opportunity to look at that, comment on that, and take a position as a community, um, challenging it?
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions by the community? And final call for any questions? Okay, no more questions. Thank you. Um, for the board now, what I'd like to do is uh, go around and get your general comments. I'd ask you not to make a motion until everybody can make their general comments. Um, I wanna give everybody chances to kind of outline maybe what you wanna do or not do. Um, so again, I'll just go through, and again, if you wanna pass, just pass. So I'll, I'll start with uh, Shannon, Shannon Holmes.
All right, thanks Brian. Um, I, I'm comfortable having a discussion about um, making a recommendation to the city commission on adding members and uh, I guess discussing uh, if, if, you know, A, the number of positions. And, and I personally agree with Courtney on the two to keep the number odd. So um, for voting purposes. Uh, and then further discuss if we want to allow both of those positions as non-freeholders or just one, or, or how we wanna define those additional two members.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, Melissa?
Yeah, this is a really big topic, and I'm gonna try to, this is something I've done quite a bit of like, research about generally, not specific to this issue, but land ownership in general in our country. Um, when this continent was colonized by folks from other continents, there were things put in place from the very beginning to benefit a certain sex of people, a certain class of people, and people from certain particular ethnic backgrounds. So all of that has happened over hundreds of years, and what we've ended up with is a disproportionate amount of people own land that doesn't match the makeup of our country. So at the very root of this issue, it's problematic because it was designed to benefit certain people and prevent other people from making decisions about land. A very obvious example of this would be indigenous people who didn't have much say at all, if any, and promises were broken. And so treaties were broken. Um, so I mean, this entire issue is problematic from the root. Um, and it seems to me there's another, another thing that we could do as a planning board that hasn't been mentioned yet is um, we don't think that, we don't remember this very often that we can do this as a city, but um, we could also suggest to the city commission that it's a legislative item where we want the city to go to the state government and say, "We want this code to be changed because it's discriminatory." Um, so I would add that to the list for sure. I'm not sure how I feel about two members. Um, I mean, I'm fine with renters being, I'm better than fine with renters being on the planning board. Um, but two out of nine still isn't representative of the amount of renters that live in our town. So it's still, it's still not, I think Dorell said it last night, meaning, last night's meeting chair, Hogan, that like thirty percent of the people that live here rent. So that's still less than thirty percent of the board would have, that's supposed to be renters. Um, so that's what's on my mind, is that this entire issue is rooted in a pretty discriminatory um, part of our history, and it's problematic. I yield for now.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy, do you have any comments?
Um, my comment would be, um, I was wondering about having this change be, being done at the legislative level. Um, where at the legislative level, um, perhaps you could address the, the language as well. Um, as well as uh, perhaps a percentage be, you know, distributed so that there was a percentage of renters versus people who owned so that it would get skewed one way or the other. Um, so that was, that was my thought. Um, I think that, that it's good to have representation from renters. And again, um, just trying to find out a way to do this legally.
Can I offer a point of order?
Yeah, go ahead.
So in two thousand and seven, and you guys can go look at this if you do, if you want to, at the Montana Legislature site. In two thousand and seven, there was a bill put forward to change the word freeholder to resident um, and amend that language, and it died in committee. Um, and uh, the percentage, um, if, if we were to do that, if we were to add a, a third uh, member to, to bring it up to the thirty percent, that is probably, yeah, accurate for, for renters in the, in town. Um, we would uh, end up with an even number of people on the board.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy, did, did you finish your comment? Do you have any other comment? Okay.
No, that's all.
Okay, uh, Jesse, do you have any comments?
Um, I uh, I, I guess I appreciate everybody else's comments. Um, and I um, have to agree that I do uh, think we should uh, consider making a motion to the commission to allow freeholders on the planning board. Um, I have not understood, I don't think, why we would need to change the number of people on the board to do that unless it was to add somebody now. Um, so maybe Courtney could explain that really quickly, why we would need to go from seven to nine? And I'll pause.
Courtney, you wanna go ahead and answer that?
You bet. So
Thank you.
A- all of the people who are listed in the state code uh, seventy-six, one, two, twenty-one, uh, one A through one D, those are your required people. Not less than, that's your not less than. Um, and then those people are listed as to who they should be. Um, and certainly if um, if there were a commissioner on the board who was a renter, that commissioner could be appointed as the government official um, to be on the board, and they wouldn't be required to, to be a freeholder. Um, and so within um, those first couple, um, so the, the city employee, um, or somebody who holds pu- public office, um, that person could also be a renter. Um, and uh, um, Taya's position could also be a renter. There's no, there's no freeholder requirement for those three positions. But it's the four citizen members um, appointed by the commission that are required to be freeholders. So um, if somebody from the city council could, could fill that spot and was, was a renter, that would be fine. But you still need that person who is a city council person appointed from the membership. Um, the second one is an employee, um, and so you still would need that person. Okay, so in order to get out of that, to get the people that you might want in addition, you have to add people. So did that make sense? I don't think I explained that very well.
No, I think it did Courtney, but why, so if, so if there are four citizen members required to be freeholders, why couldn't we change that statement? Or, or make a recommendation to change that statement?
Because we can't violate the state law.
Oh, cuz it's state law. Okay, okay. Got it. Thank you, and I yield.
Okay, thank you. Um, Tori, you got anything, any comments you'd like to make?
Uh, I just wanna thank uh, Melissa for um, talking about the, the history of this issue and how it, it goes beyond just planning. Um, and I, I'm, I'm very sympathetic with that sentiment. Um, it's interesting to hear that actually technically four out of, if we were to add two, the technically four out of nine members would, could be renters. Um, now I, I realize in, in practice, that's not likely, but it's possible. Um, which, that comes to forty-four percent, which would be an overrepresentation of renters, which I don't think is a problem, but um, and then I think my, the thing that I'm kind of struggling or considering is like, what is the charge of the planning board? Is um, is this, like, I, I, I think that the solution of, of adding two um, citizen spots seems relatively elegant without maybe spending, spending our resources or time trying to fight an uphill battle with the state legislature where it's already failed only, you know, only thirteen years ago. Uh, and I yield.
Thank you. And Taya, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, just I wanna echo others' comments. I think it's important that the board represents those living in Livingston um, and making a home there, as well as um, a professional life and a family. Um, and I think echoing Shannon, just that we have this conversation and really clarify what, what it would look like and what changes we need to make, so that we're all very clear.
Great, thank you. Um, and then my comments, um, I echo lots of what's already been said. Um, I, I have publicly stated that I don't like the requirement for a uh, landowner only. Um, uh, for the citizen members, I think it should be opened up to renters. Um, I gotta admit, I'm not a big fan of opening it up to, or having a board of nine people. Um, I will tell you, through my experience of being on the board now and, and especially chairing the board, nine is a lot of people to manage, and especially for time. If we had nine members, anytime we wanna have any type of discussion, you can see how long this goes. We, it could be pretty significant. So I'd rather not do the code change to add to, add to people. Uh, I do understand it's an uphill battle to go against the legislatian, legislation. Um, but I think, at least from what I'm hearing from the public and from everybody else, and my personal feeling is that this is something that is worth trying to change in state law. If we just change this in code, um, I think, you know, we can pat ourselves on the fe- on the back and say, "We did it here locally." But if, if this is something that we as a community are serious about trying to change statewide, then we should, in my opinion, that should be the avenue we choose, is that we should work with the city commission and the city attorney and whoever else to figure out how to navigate, best navigate that process. Now, we've probably already obviously missed this year's legislative session. Um, but um, but I'm think, I'm thinking it's something that would be worthwhile doing. So um, so those are my thoughts. So at this time, for uh, the board members, I'm gonna ask to see if anybody wants to make a motion. Uh, any, either way of, of doing, you know, one or the other, going code, going legislature, tabling this for a while. Um, again, just kinda opening it up for, for folks to, to make a motion on what they're, what they'd like to do.
Brian, can I ask one more question, uh, real quick? This is Jesse. Um, um, I guess my question was, and I, and this is sort of, uh, I guess Courtney um, and, and Michelle sort of touched on this in her, in her, her question as well. But uh, given that other cities have done this without a change to the legislature, are they simply are they simply, are they changing their city code to reflect allowing freeholders onto their planning board, or are they sort of just looking the other way to Montana law?
Little bit of both.
Okay. And if that's the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Courtney.
Lawyers are really good at at finding legal arguments and justifications for the positions that they want to hold. It's what we do for a living. Um, and so when we look at um what other places are doing, we have to look at how they're using the the state code and then what's in their code as well. So there are a fair number of planning boards around the state, particularly in um Kalispel, Missoula, and Cascade County who have nine or eleven members on their boards. So they have big planning boards. Um, and and they also have, in some cases, city-county planning boards. Um, and and so they're they're structured a little different, th- their their underlying law is a little different, but for the most part, all of the uh city-county, city and county planning board requirements include a freehold requirement for all of those memberships in almost exactly the same way that they do for the city planning board. They ask for members of the governing body, members of staff, uh, because often we have a public works director or a planning director who can um, who can participate in those, who has the knowledge to assist the boards um with their decision-making and fact-finding. Um, so they do it in a, in a lot of subtly different ways. But there is also, um, and at least one instance, a a board who said, this is what we want to do and we don't want to use that, and so they found the legal justification to do that. And we can do that. Um, I my job is to tell you what the law is and what we can do with it. And then your decision is how you're going to use that information moving forward. Um, I I don't generally want to try to craft a somewhat surreptitious way around the law rather than addressing it head-on and letting you know kind of where the edges are.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so so I guess my thought is, uh, we will not be electing officers again for another year um unless somebody steps off. Um, I I I is my uh assumption. And um, so we could, as a board, uh, ask the city commission to take this to the legislature. And could we also ask the city commission to look at ways in which if a uh person cut, you know, if if a position does open up, we could, we could encourage the city commission to allow freeho- holders on there in in whatever, and I know you use the terms uh, I could spell it, but I can't say it, surreptitious way. Um. I mean, could we, could we do that while we're waiting for uh the city to tackle the the uh a bill of the legislation?
So so I want to make sure that I'm I'm giving you the information you need and also allowing you to be specific in your request for what you would want of us. So do you want the word freeholder removed? Because it's a legal term of art in the same way that fee simple is. And I think that that is at least in part some of the resistance to changing that word from freeholder to resident, which was the request in two thousand and seven. So is that the request? We want to remove that word and and change it with a word that is more inclusive? Or is the request that you want us to take to the legislature that the freeholder requirement for four of seven positions be entirely removed? Because then there would be no resident requirement for any member of the board.
Okay, so if you removed freeholder and replaced it with the word resident, I'm sorry, that seems to, that would seem to solve our problem. Did you say that it wasn't towards the end of your sentence? I'm sorry.
It would not. So it would still require that you own property. Uh, uh, if if we ch- if we change the word in the way that it was intended, it was intended to be changed in two thousand and seven, and and I think when I said resident, I misspoke. That was not what I intended to say. Um, because it it intend, it was um, it was intended still to be landowners.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
So
Can I get?
And we're happy to go forward and and take your request to the legislature, whether it's this term or next term. But I want you to to ask us to do the thing that you really want us to do, which is either remove the freeholder uh requirement entirely or simply change it to a word that is more inclusive, but still mandates property ownership.
So if I could ask for clarification, then if we wanted to change the word to get rid of the word freeholder and yet allow the flexibility for those four people to be either property owners or renters, what would that word be that we are asking for?
Uh, I think that you could ask for resident because that si- simply means that you live within the city.
Okay.
Um, and I think that's a much harder ask um as far as the the state legislature goes. Um, but simply removing the word freeholder and replacing it with something like property owner is uh is I think a much, a much cleaner ask uh for for changes. Because then you're not asking for everybody to be able to be a non-property owner. You're only asking for there to be a change in the the language that you find objectionable.
Right there. And there's two, eh, that I think that's the issue. There's two issues that I I hears. One is there's um um, folks find the word objectionable. And two is people want to have the flexibility, though, too, to allow renters to sit on the board. So in my mind, the only way to do that is to recommend a change. Let me back up. The only way to do that from a legislative per- from a legislative process is to recommend the change from freeholder to residence, realizing, though, that is a heavy lift. Is that kind of surmise things?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so uh, back to the board. Um, is, does anybody have want to make a motion anyway, anyhow, at this particular time to proceed with one of these options or table it, or how would you like to proceed?
Brian?
Yes, go ahead.
I didn't know. I just kind of keep thinking about um needing time to process all of this and uh so I guess I'd like to make a motion to table it.
Okay, so Stacy's made a motion to table uh this discussion for more, uh, to give her more time to consider it. Uh, is there a second? I'll go ahead and make a second. Um, let's go ahead and have a vote. So the motion is to uh table this issue for further consideration, bring it up at a future meeting to decide on a way ahead. So we'll take a vote now. Um.
Do you have to open it to public comment before vote?
We do. Thank you. Uh, I'd like to.
Can I say one clarifying thing about tabling?
Uh, you may.
Or Matthew, if he's still on, like, tabling would mean that there is no action taken, including not telling the city. We wouldn't be able to tell the ki- city commission to take it to the state and legislature is starting right now. Everybody's going back to session and getting ready, so um it would mean that we couldn't do that potentially in a timely way. I'm just going to throw that out there. Um, thanks.
Okay.
Brian, may I add to Melissa's?
You may.
Uh, so we live in a democracy, correct? And don't we have state representation here locally? Um, if we all personally have the same same feelings about this issue, can we not, as citizens, reach out to our legislators and request that without going through the ci- city commission initially? Wouldn't that be an option that we could do on an individual basis?
Um, yeah, obviously it would. Um, but um yeah, I I I in discussion right now at this point is the is the motion to table this. And and what we're saying by table is not indefinite delay, but give people time to think about it and put this on a future agenda to then come up with a a an approach. So um, before we make a vote, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Does anybody want to make us any comments?
Yeah, Jonathan Hettinger, five nineteen West Park Street.
Go ahead.
I just wanna, I just wanted to say, um, I guess I, I think that the planning board has an option to just recommend, I mean, you should tell the city commission what you want, and I think you should tell the city commission that you don't want them to follow this anymore uh in the meantime. I don't think, I think that going to the legislature is a fine solution, but I think that that doesn't solve the problem for now. Um, and I think that the issue is this is actively discriminatory and in this community right now. Um, and I I really disagree with the city attorney's racist and misogynistic interpretation of state law in this case. I mean, the city, I mean, this is, the facts were laid pretty clear in the Missoula case. And um, as Courtney says, lawyers are really good at finding justification for the positions that they want to hold. And um, I think that city attorneys made it clear that the city really wants to uphold this law in order to update, to maintain the racist power structure that already exists in land ownership in this community. And I think that the planning board should take a bold statement, say that we don't want to do this. We don't want to uphold this racist and misogynistic system that um where power is based off of land. Because when you think about the city of Livingston, you don't think about, you think about the community, the people in it, and everyone in the community at different points in their life, but that doesn't mean that they're any less of a member of the city or less a member of the community. They also um, they have less of a stake what's going on. I think that one of the things that we that we're forgetting about here is the renters do pay property tax through their uh, through paying rent. They pay for the um, they pay more than what it costs. Landlords are actively um taking wealth from renters in order to um pay their property taxes. So I think that when you think about the community, you think about the people in it, everyone has a stake in the place that they live in, and I just think that you should, to this planning board, should consider taking bold action right now to end this discriminatory practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on the motion? Second call for public comment. And third and final call for public comment. Okay, so again, the motion on the table is, motion on the table, the motion is whether we as a board want to table this for now, think about it and then figure out a way to proceed at a future meeting. Um, go ahead now and take a vote. Um, when I call your name, please state your vote. Shannon?
Brian, just a point of clarification. Um.
Yeah.
If I vote to approve tabling this, could there be another motion to add it to the agenda to the next meeting, scheduled meeting we have?
Um. Yeah, we'd have to do another motion to do that. Um, unless I can.
Take, tabling it would be just, we're going to end the discussion on it this evening, correct?
Correct. But yes, we would definitely bring it up on a future agenda. Now, the thing that we did not define in the motion is when we would bring it forward again.
So I, if, if if the vote is to just table it, I'm going to vote no.
Um, one thing I can ask, and this, I don't know if I'm busting um protocol here, but I could ask if we could restate the motion, but with a defined date for when we will bring this up to um up for discussion again. And so Stacy, I'm going to ask you if you'd be willing to change the motion to table it for a defined period versus keeping it open-ended. And if so, what that would be. Now, if you want to keep it as red, as you have it, we can leave it, but if you'd like to modify it to state a specific date, then I'll leave that up to you.
Brian, I'll take a stab at it. I make a motion to amend the current motion and put it on the agenda for our next scheduled meeting.
Oh, I'm not sure I can do that. Um.
Hi, Brian. Brian?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think I'm the only one to amend my motion, is that correct?
I think so. I think you are.
I can't even amend my motion. I think we have to vote on it as is and then start over again. No?
Hey, Brian?
Yeah, go ahead, Matthew. Save me here.
Shannon is welcome to propose an amendment to that motion. You will need to vote on his amendment um to the motion. It does need a second as well.
Um, after we go through the first vote or?
No, you need to vote on the amendment to the motion first before you vote on the the original motion.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay, so there's a motion out there, an amendment to the motion to table this discussion till the next meeting, which would be uh, two weeks from today. Do we have a second? This is Brian. I'm going to go ahead and second it. Um, so the so open up for public comment. The motion on the table right now is to table this discussion until our next meeting on the twentieth. Uh, any public comment at this time? Second call for public comment. Third and final call for public comment. So we'll go ahead and take a vote at this time. Um, again, the motion is table um and have it as an agenda topic for our next meeting uh two weeks from today. So Shannon, how would you like to vote?
Four.
Four. Melissa?
Against.
Stacy?
Against.
Jesse?
Against.
Uh, Tori?
Against.
Taya?
Against.
And Brian is four. So now we'll go back to the original motion, which was just to table this. So essentially, we're saying table indefinitely. Um. Shannon, how'd you vote?
Against.
Melissa?
Against.
Stacy?
Four.
Jesse?
Against.
Tori?
Against.
Taya?
Against.
And Brian against. Okay, um. So we are um now I'm opening it up for another motion on how to proceed.
Brian, I'll make a motion. This is Jesse.
Go ahead.
And I'm going to give this motion my best shot. Um, I make a motion that we recommend to the city commission to uh um to reach out to local legislatures, uh legislators to uh oppose and remove the word freeholder from the state statute entirely and replace with and replace with the word resident.
Okay, so the motion from Jessie is to, again, have the City Commission reach out to legislatures to recommend and oppose to the term freeholder and replace that with residence. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Tori, that was you? Yep. Haven't figured out your voice yet. Thank you. Okay, I'll open that motion up to the public, to the general public. Any comments on that regard? Second call for comments. Third and final call for comments. Comments are closed. We'll now go ahead and take a vote. Bear with me a second, please. Okay, again, the motion on the table is recommend, and this recommendation will be via a memo, I presume, memo to the Commission and to, what do we use, was reach out to the legislatures to oppose the term freeholder within the Montana Code annotated and replace that with residence. So when I call your name, please state your position of for or against. Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Stacy?
For.
Jessie?
For.
Tori?
For.
Taya?
For.
And Brian is for as well. So the motion passes. Would somebody like to volunteer to draft this memorandum for the, for the City Commission?
I'll do it since I made the motion.
Thank you.
Sure, no problem.
And Courtney, could we solicit your help in that memo so we don't do anything too crazy? Not saying that you're going to do something crazy, Jessie, I mean, just to make sure that we.
No, I would appreciate it. I, I will, my plan was to talk to Courtney.
Yeah, or we can run that through Matthew, however you want to do that. Matthew, Courtney, are you okay with that?
Courtney, you're on mute, I think.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you, sorry. I think your motion is very straightforward, and I think it's, it's very clear what you're asking for. So if you would just CC Matthew and I together, whatever you send, that keeps he and I on the same loop, and, you know, we'd be happy to, to review that before you send your, your official recommendation for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Bear with me here as I catch up on a couple notes. Okay, thank you, everybody. That was a very good discussion, I feel. And, well, hopefully we can make some progress on this. Courtney, thanks again for attending. Obviously, you can stick around for the rest of the evening, or you can drop. The rest of this is just going to be kind of Planning Board business. But again, really appreciate your expertise and your help this evening.
Thank you so much for your appreciation. And if there's nothing else that you guys have for me, I will probably drop off.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up on the agenda is, at the beginning of every year, doing officer elections, planning, I'm sorry, planning, City Commission did theirs last evening as well. So in being in line with that, we'll do ours this evening as well. As I mentioned last week, I am stepping down, I'm sorry, last May, I am stepping down as chair, so I appreciate if I do not get nominated. I'm happy to help out as vice, but no longer selected to be chair at this time. So I will open up the floor to any, any nominees, any nominees for folks that would like to nominate somebody for, for any of the three officer positions of chair, vice chair, or recorder.
I have a question, Brian.
Yeah.
Are these positions open to any person on the board, not just the citizen people? I mean, it's anybody on the board, is that correct?
They are, that's correct. I will say, though, traditionally, these have, positions have all been held by the four volunteer citizen members. But there's, but anybody could be, anybody could hold any of these positions. I will state a personal opinion. I think there would be a, I do think there would be an awkward potential conflict if either Shannon from the city or Melissa from the commission, or our county representative, quite frankly, was selected as either the chair or the vice chair. I think that we could probably run into some problems there that we don't even realize yet. That's just my opinion, but.
I, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, but that's, again, just my opinion. But no, I'm not aware of anything that restricts, that restricts anybody from holding any of these positions.
I'm going to make it easier on you all, potentially, and let you know that I'm not interested in an officer position because I don't want a disproportionate amount of influence on any of these decisions. I prefer we can spread it out. And I already go to all the commission meetings and get a vote there, so.
Brian?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Shannon. I'd like to make a motion to elect you as the vice chair. We'll start off easy.
Okay.
A second.
I'm sorry, who was that? I'm sorry, who was that?
Taya.
Got it. Okay, I don't think this requires public comment. The City Commission didn't last night, so I'm going to take their role. So we'll just go ahead and do, we'll just do a, do a, do an up-down vote. I, I, I will accept a vice, just to let everybody know. So Shannon, for or against?
Emphatically for.
Thank you. Melissa?
For.
Stacy?
For, but I wish you'd stay as chair.
For, and I second Stacy.
That wasn't a motion. Tori, did, I'm sorry, I skipped over you. Tori?
For.
And I will recuse myself. So I will be happy to be your vice chair. Thank you. Any motions, so the motion passes. Any motions for the chair or the recorder?
Brian, this is Shannon again.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to have Jessie as the chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, no, Melissa, second it. Okay, so the motion is for, first of all, I guess we should ask Jessie, Jessie, you, for officer positions, I, we should ask everybody if they're willing to do that. Jessie, are you willing to do that?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
With your help, vice chair.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. Happy to help everybody. So we'll go ahead and do the vote then. Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Stacy?
For, you'll be great.
Jessie?
For.
For.
Taya?
For.
Taya, sorry.
No worries.
And Brian seconds that. You'll be great. So far, so Jessie will be our new chair, and I will definitely be happy to help any way I can. Okay, the final position of recorder. Shannon, you want to make a motion? I'm just joking.
I'll make a run. I'm going to make the motion to elect Stacy as the secretary.
Stacy, and I'm sorry, who was that second?
Taya.
Taya, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Shannon?
For.
Melissa?
For.
Stacy? And, and I guess Stacy, I'm sorry, I should ask, are you okay with that? I didn't do that at the time. My apologies.
It looks like she froze on my end. She freezes.
Are you there, Stacy?
Yeah, I can't hear you, so.
Is it just me, or is everybody else having a hard time hearing us?
You're free.
I can hear you. I think it's Stacy that froze.
Oh, okay. That was me from it there. Stacy, can you hear us?
Oh, she, she's off.
Looks like she dropped. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and proceed with the vote, but we'll obviously check with her when she gets back on. Jessie?
Uh, for.
Tori?
For.
Taya?
For.
And Brian is for. Stacy, I think I saw you join back on. Can you hear us? Stacy, boy, this is quite a ploy to try to get out of this, isn't it? Uh, let's give her a second here.
There she goes.
I can see her on there, but, can you hear us, Stacy?
I'm back, I'm back, but my connection is very unstable, but my vote was yes.
Okay, great. So while you were gone, we went ahead and voted you in anyway, so congratulations. Okay, we have two subjects left, just to give some quick updates. There's really not too much there. Matthew already sent one out and then talked about the growth policy and schedule. Would everybody like to take a quick break before we proceed, or do you want to continue to go on? Hearing nothing, we'll go ahead and continue. Just a quick update, for the City Commission meeting was last evening. If you didn't get a chance to see the email from Matthew to the board members, he did give an update on a couple things. I attended as well. The Stacy, Jovic, and Tori were obviously selected to be permanent board members. Congratulations to both of you. The Planning Board request for an extension on the growth policy recommendation was approved. Just, I will just say, from some of the comments made by the commissioners, they were all very positive in, in that they trusted us to do a good job and realized and understood that, you know, this was, was difficult. Melissa did a great job of outlining how this, you know, this time was different. We've never had one this big, so it was going to take more time. So, so we didn't get any pushback on that, so we're good to continue. I, as you all saw from the last meeting, I did put in the annual accomplishment report, but that was not on the agenda, nor was it, nor was it discussed. And there was no other information regarding the Planning Board at last evening's meeting. So any questions from any of the board members before we move on to the next topic? Okay, so as discussed, we did get approval to proceed. We did vote at the last meeting on a rough schedule. We said that we were, as a group, going to meet two times in January, this first one being administrative, two in February, two in March, one in April, and then have a final public hearing for the second meeting in April to provide a recommendation to the City Commission. So just to get conversation going, this isn't locked in stone, but I thought I'd take the liberty of putting together at least an initial draft schedule that we could talk about, adjust, and move around. So what I did is I looked at all the public comments and tried to figure out where we kind of got, it's, it's, it's actually really interesting. Where we got the most real, I would say, comments, it almost follows the order of the document itself. So obviously, maps and the EK, ETJ were, were primary in, in most of the comments that we got. Land use and natural resources were high up there, then the housing economy, and then kind of to a lesser part as you go down. So again, this was just an initial draft I threw together. Let me kind of go through it quickly, and then we can have a conversation on it and, and adjust it accordingly on, on what we want to tackle and how we want to proceed. Again, just as a reminder as well, the city, Matthew has been, Matthew and staff have been taking the comments received and adjusting the, the draft accordingly. So the plan would be that we would use essentially that as our new baseline draft to review and go through, based on all the public comment that we've received so far. So the outlined schedule that I put together was that for the next meeting, which is January 20th, would be that we would go over the maps, the exhibits that I have outlined there were the ones that were specifically called out, start on the ETJ on the next meeting in February, finish the ETJ if required, if we didn't get everything complete, hit the introduction and population and community character, second meeting in February, land use. I pulled up chapter 11 just because I thought land use and land use recommendations, we should hit those at the same time, and natural resources, which kind of tied well in as well, and also was a pretty high priority for, based on all the comments we received. Next meeting in March, housing economy and local services, those all kind of fit together. And then finishing up with transportation, public facilities, intergovernmental coordination implementation, where there was not a lot of comments, quite frankly, in all the comments we received, vast majority of them were in the first six chapters. And then I thought for the last meeting, we could do, you know, talk about readability a bit, you know, make sure the page numbering and general layout was okay, look at the other appendices, and just kind of give us a little bit of flexibility to do some final cleanup in case we want to move some things down, or in case we slip in the schedule. And then finally, a public hearing with the recommendation of the Commission with the intent of getting it to the Commission for a May vote. So that's my first dab at this. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion. Again, I'll just go down the laundry list of, of the order we've been going on all evening. Shannon, what are your, what are your thoughts about, about this? Any, any recommended, any recommendations?
No, I just want to thank you for putting some thought and effort into that, and the schedule seems very reasonable to me, and thank you. So I, I'm in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, any, any thoughts, suggestions, comments?
I echo what Shannon said.
Stacy? Did we drop Stacy again? Nope, she's there. Stacy, you're on mute, if you're trying to speak. Stacy, we can't hear you if you're trying to speak. We'll go ahead and skip over you.
I think.
Oh, there you are. You're good.
Yeah, I, I'm good for a moment.
Okay.
I think.
Speak fast.
Yeah. I think it looks good, just knowing that we can also adjust if we have to finish something up in the next one, so that we are all aware that it's not an absolute for each one.
Sure.
Oh, and I had one other thought.
Go ahead.
That, you know, my thinking on this is that we would not be making motions on any of this until the very end, so that this is just a consensus of the language as we go along. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I would look at these, I would say these would be more working sessions where we're just rolling up our sleeves and we're adjusting the language. I wouldn't see us taking any votes until we hit the public hearing at the end, kind of on a pass fail.
Right.
Brian, can I jump in quickly on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
If the planning board is going to recommend specific linguistic changes, I think you do need to take a vote just to make sure that we have majority opinion on those linguistic changes. I just want to make that clear, that you do need to have some official vote or determination on specific changes if you're requesting specific language, just to make sure that everyone agrees on the planning board.
Okay. So let me ask you this, Matthew, and just for discussion as well. Could we maybe hold all of those for the entire meeting? And basically, at the end of the meeting, kind of give it a thumbs up, thumbs down vote? Or do you think we need to do it? I'm afraid if we do it piecemeal, we'll never get done.
No, you could. Go ahead, Stacy.
But is in, when you do a form of consensus, that is basically, you know, getting everybody's agreement on something. So isn't that essentially, I mean, instead of belaboring it into the form of a motion, is that still applicable so that you can do it on a consensus form?
In this case, probably not. Our basically, the method of showing consensus is to take a vote on it. You can do it at the end in one motion. That's fine. I have no issues with that, but we do need to show officially that there is. We don't need consensus, but we need majority in this case.
Yes, I think I'd recommend that, and obviously I won't be chairing, but that we kind of just to keep things going, we try to keep the consensus. You know, if we really hit on a sticking point, we'll probably have to stop there and do a vote on something. If we definitely come to loggerheads and say, you know, hey, this, we're just too divided on that, we may have to stop at that point to do a motion. But I think if we set up as a goal to do just a kind of a, you know, try to work consensus, work through the comments as we go along, and then at the end, just do an up or down vote. But again, if during the session, we just feel like we've just hit a dead end, we could obviously throw a motion in there and do it, move forward. Everybody okay? Well, you okay with that, Stacy?
Yeah. I just don't want to get us bogged down into one motion after another and all of that. That's all. I was just trying to prevent us from going that route.
Thanks for bringing it up. It's good. It's important for us to all know that. Because yeah, if we had to do a motion for each and every comment, it would take us two years to get through this.
And Brian, if I might add, I mean, I think really there's going to be some pressure on Jessie as the chair at that time. If we are going through motions and we open it up to public comment, we just need to be sensitive that we're not hearing things for the third or fourth or fifth time. I mean, comments need to be new comments that we've not previously heard, correct?
Well, I'm not sure. I'm not sure that we can, I mean, we can obviously recommend that to the public. I don't think we can say what they can or cannot say. But I agree with you that we could say that, you know, it'd be preferred if you brought something new to the table, or at least like we've been doing, saying, you know, if you just agree with something that somebody previously said, you can acknowledge that. But it's, you know, we can't, I'd say we can't really limit what the public has to say. But Stacy, anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. Jessie, any comments on this? Or changes or recommendations?
Sorry, okay, there we go. I have this weird little hand instead of a cursor sometimes, and I can't unmute. I had a slightly different idea, Brian. And so I'm just going to throw it out there, but I will like, I do think that your schedule looks good. But at the last meeting I had mentioned, I did think that we might need more time on both the extraterritorial jurisdiction and the MAPS. And I see that you did that here. But I actually, I might just tell you the schedule I said, just for fun, and we can, just for fun. Okay, so I had on the 20th, we would talk about the ETEJ. On the third, we would discuss the future land use maps and the future growth map. And then I went in order. So the 17th, I did chapters one, two, and three. The third, I did four, five, and six. The 17th, I did seven, eight, and nine. And the seventh, I did 10, 11, and 12, because I agree with your statement in the beginning. A lot of the hot, I thought that the hot button topics were well dispersed in the order. And then the 21st would be the vote. And so that's the only change I maybe would suggest is, you know, I have a feeling based on public comment, these, the ETEJ and the MAPS might require more time. Now, we could stick with the schedule that you have and anticipate that things will be pushed back to the meeting on the 7th. You know, if we don't address each chapter, if we end up going over. So I guess as long as that's okay with public notice. You know, so for instance, if we don't get to 10 and 12 on the 17th, then we would have to notice that we move it to the 7th or something like that. As long as it's okay. If we don't get to those things, then I think this is fine. But I just have a feeling these things are going to take a little bit more time.
Yeah, no, that's a good comment. And yeah, I looked that we could basically essentially change this every week if we had to, meaning let's just say, let's just say on February 3rd that we found that we just could not get to chapter one and two, then at that time in the next agenda, we would just have to say, okay, everything's going to slide down some. That's kind of why I gave that toward the end there, just sort of cleanup. I do think we need to keep, try to keep on this schedule, keep the discipline on the schedule, because we could easily lose ourselves and find ourselves slip. We can't make it too easy to slip, let me put it that way. We're going to have to be, we're going to have to be pretty decisive, and there are going to be times where we're going to have to say, look, it's good enough.
Brian, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's actually a question for Matthew. For noticing for the meetings. We're not necessarily required to be certain, specific to the chapters like we would. Would we? We are not required to do that. We can just, we are talking about the growth policy, and all of these fall under the growth policy. So this is an internal document for us as a guideline to try to get through everything. Is that correct?
It is correct. Because you're not making any final recommendations, we don't need to notice it in that way, so we can notice it as a hearing for, you know, the growth policy. Obviously, it's helpful for the public and helpful for the city to be able to tell people that we're working on specific chapters for certain weeks, or if we want to get something out in advance on Facebook or something like that. But we don't have to do that, and it certainly can remain flexible and a little bit fluid.
That's all I just want is to be able to have that ability and have our notices go out so that we have the ability to move faster. Or, you know, if we get hung up on something, we have the ability to adjust.
Yeah, I think if we keep this marked as draft, we include this with each agenda and say, look, this is our intent. You know, it kind of gives everybody, I agree, I kind of like to give the public, because that was one of the comments that we, more than once, we received is to break this into chunks that they knew were coming. So again, if somebody doesn't care about housing, economy, and local services, they know that they don't have to attend that meeting, or if they're really focused on one area. So I guess the best, the thing we can say is best, you know, this is our best intent, but we may have to flex. Jessie, do you have any more comments or statements?
I don't know if you're on mute.
No, I am. Sorry, I'm toggling. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I don't have any more comments. I'm sorry.
Okay.
All done.
Thank you. Tori, any thoughts, comments?
Thanks for putting this together. I will not be attending the meeting on March 17th, which has Chapter 8 on transportation, which is my specific area of expertise. So maybe if we could move that to an earlier date, that would be. And I mean, I'm very much interested in contributing to that conversation. I know I can do so ahead of time in written comments, but I'd love to be able to attend the meeting when we're talking about transportation.
Yeah, and we definitely would like your expertise. So would any, let's, let me do this, and then we'll see if anybody, everybody's okay with this. I'm going to, I'm going to swap. On the 3rd, I'm going to move transportation there, and we'll move local services down. And we'll try, again, best effort, and we'll try to do that. So thanks for that suggestion, because yeah, definitely want to take advantage of your expertise. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you very much.
Okay. Taya, any comments?
Muted. Just a question. So if we're voting on the changes session by session, does that then, it seems like that kind of prevents us from, say, discussion comes up and in the next session, we want to go back and change something, you know, are we then having to vote on that specific change? I'm just wondering, you know, can it be a more fluid process where we're able to go back and forth? Because I would think that each session, you know, might inform another.
I could see that happening. For example, we might get into housing and say, gosh, you remember what we saw back there in the introduction? Maybe we need to revisit that. I think it's important to have kind of a template that we're moving from, but also give us enough flexibility that we could go back if we needed to. So.
I was just wondering.
So there's flexibility. So yeah, we could go back. I mean, just because we vote at the end of the day on those, can say, for consensus, say after the meeting on February, what was, or housing, I guess it is. Say after February 3rd, we do, or I'm sorry, whichever example I give. But once we approve that, doesn't mean that's locked in stone. We can go back and revisit that if we happen to get smarter on something, or we see something, or we may see a conflict. So I don't think we're that rigid. All we have to do is be, again, conscious of time. We can't go back and revisit too much. You know, we've got to pretty much stick with the schedule and stick with our guns, or we'll never get it done. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Jessie, I agree with your comments. I think if you're okay with it, I'd recommend we stay with this. It's a little more aggressive schedule. But again, if we don't get this far, we just slip everything down, realizing that we can't, we can't find ourselves that on April 7th that we've got eight chapters to go through. We just have to have that, you know, that discipline to make sure that we, you know, cut conversation bit shorter, bit fast. So, yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering what the timing was going to be for Matthew to get us the latest draft prior to the next meeting?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. Let's, first of all, is everybody basically noticed something then? We're all in agreement, this is a good draft schedule that we'll just try to stick to. Just unless, I'll just, unless I hear something, I'll just assume we're a go on that. Okay. On the agenda, I had to schedule and process. So one thing I wanted to do is lock down schedule first, make sure we are on that, and then now on process. So thanks. Yeah, good question, Stacy. So Matthew, how's the best way to work with you then as far as making sure that we're working off the latest draft? We obviously want to have the latest draft. I'm hoping we all come, having reviewed the area that we're about to go into, so that we're not coming in cold. So what are your thoughts on the rhythm and the process for that, Matthew?
Yeah, so what I was thinking is if you all do make a motion to propose specific changes, we'll take those and make those changes and hope to get those to you probably a week before the meeting, if possible. It's going to be a tight turnaround, so we're going to try to do that. But basically, make sure that you get the new drafts ahead of time in such a way that you can review that and be prepared for the next section of chapters as well.
Okay.
So are you done?
Go ahead, go ahead, and finish your thoughts, Stacy.
Well, I just wanted, did I hear you say you were going to get it to us, get the draft to us three days before our meeting? Or the day before? Or what were you thinking?
I'll try for a week. I don't know if that's, I'm going to have to talk to Burton as well to see how quickly they can turn around stuff. And it may be that we just do it in the office. So I'm going to try for a week, but I'll have a better idea after we go through the first chapter, how much time it's going to take.
Yeah, and the good thing, I'm sorry, and the good thing as well, pretty much hopefully, again, except for in those cases like Taya brought up, we probably won't be too focused on the last chapter. We should at that point be focused really on the next chapters going forward. So Matthew, is the most, is the latest and greatest version out there that's up to date? Is that, is that the one that's? I haven't done like a version check. Maybe I'll just ask you to resend that link, just to make sure that we've all got the latest and greatest. I'm just, I just, I've got a version, but I don't know if that is, that's it.
Yeah, I will send you all an updated version and provide you some sort of memo with any changes we may have made. From the last version was the December 20th meeting version. And I can send out that link again as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Brian?
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
So Matthew, are you done? Or is the city staff done doing edits right now until the planning board?
There's a couple edits from the last meeting that I need to speak with other staff about. They should be pretty minimal, but there may be a few more edits basically coming out of that December meeting.
So I still can't access it. I'm not able to access the draft, so I'm going to have to work with you to get printed. And I just need to make sure I have enough time, since I have to prepare for commission meetings also. But we can email. Thank you, Matthew.
So I have one more question.
Let me follow up on that, I guess, technology question. So last time we got that version, we had access into, I can't remember if it was in Dropbox or just a shared file somewhere. Did anybody else have problem accessing that?
I haven't actually. Yeah, I haven't actually found it. I went to go back and look for it, and I couldn't find it, so.
Okay. So Matthew, if you could send it out to everybody again, and then if anybody has problems accessing it, I don't know if it's a permissions thing that Faith or you set up, Matthew? It may be just permissions.
Yeah, I can send it out again, and I'll look at all the permissions. I think they were set to as loose as they can be, but I'll make sure.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Sorry, Stacy, go ahead.
Well, I guess I was wondering how we were going to handle allocating time for discussion of what we have done. The city, Matthew is then gone, made those changes. But unless we're doing specific wording, we still have to review those before we start the new chapters to see if they actually met the intent that we agreed on. Right?
Yes, that's why I suggested that everybody review for sure the sections that had, the section that we're going to talk about, that are on the agenda ahead of time, so that you're prepared to discuss any. going to talk about throughout the agenda ahead of time so that you're prepared to discuss any, you know, we'll, we'll probably. Yeah, if you have, if you, you know, if, if, if the way it's written, if you think that's good, you know, there's really, if we collectively look at it and say, hey, yeah, we think this looks good. It meets, you know, the intent of the public comment we had and, and context of other things that we've read and seen, you know, that's fine. We don't really have to address that. It'll probably be easier if people just kind of keep notes about those things specifically that they want to talk about. Um, just so that we can get through the meeting kind of quickly. You know, we don't want to just sit there and read it. We're not going to just sit there and read it. Again, I'm not going to be the chair, but you know, I, I think what we're probably going to do is just really focus on, on those, on those updates at that point. Make sure that it captured the intent that we're all looking for, for that particular section, based, based on all the public comment we've received.
Can I make a quick comment to Brian?
Sure.
Um, and Stacy, if you haven't seen this new draft, um, I think maybe it'll make more sense when you do see it. But the way these guys have lined it out is, it's, it is basically a, a redlined draft with, um, the comments on the back. So my thought on this and is, is that we would, you know, see the comments that, the changes that were made and, and probably more so accept the comments or not, um, and then open it up to discussion. Um, and as long as Matthew, as comments come in, we had discussed, like, I know we just got a, a written comment today. So I think what we discussed or the expectation was that if there is written comment, that it would be reflected in that section when we reviewed it. And you would, and you would explain how you changed it based on that written comment. Does that make sense? So that we would, so the change would already be made based on the comment that came in so that we wouldn't be, responsible for changing the wording in the document during our meetings. It will already have been done by Matthew and his crew, um, and referenced, so the public can also see where their comments were inserted or why they were not. Am I on the same page as you, Matthew, and, and the rest of the planning board that that was the expectation?
That, that's my expectation. And I, I, I agree with you, Jesse. Um, if, it, I think it's pretty, when you look at it, it's pretty straightforward, the changes and how they're made and how they're annotated. So I, I, so it, it seems pretty intuitive, I guess, is the word I'm looking for.
And so Matthew, will you be updating this, uh, uh, using the public comment that just came in? Will you reference that in the draft that you're going to send us for our meeting on the 20th? Since it, um, was specific to the ETJ and the maps?
So, um, what we've done is basically gone through all the comment and made comment on the comment, uh, which you all haven't seen, but is, we have. And then worked in items that made sense for the scope and specificity. So basically if someone makes a comment that has no real suggestion in it, it's very hard to work that in. There's also contradictory comments. So we are not going to be able to work in every single comment we get. And also things like the comments that came in today are, are very much process oriented. Um, and obviously those aren't going to be worked in. So, um, for the original draft, it was basically because it was us going through it. We looked through all the comment and made comments on those and worked in what we felt was appropriate. At this point, um, it's probably up to the, the planning board to determine what they find appropriate and direct us to add that to the draft. If you would like, staff can continue to do that same process with the planning boards, understanding that staff is not going to work in every single comment that is made potentially, um, if they don't meet the scope, or there's nothing specific, or if they're contradictory to, um, other comments we've gotten. Obviously, uh, we've had a lot of comments on infill and then very few comments on requesting sort of large lot expansion. But we did have those comments. We can't work both of those comments into the, to the growth policy. So, um, I wouldn't have the expectation that staff would work every single comment we got into the growth goals.
Yeah, just a quick. Yeah, quick comment. Yeah, quick comment. That, yeah, as I went and, and I, over the Christmas break, I did, I went through pretty much almost all the comments again. And there were, there were a lot of comments, um, that were very process oriented, or I would say pretty much general, in kind of in general. A, a good section, a good chunk of them where I wouldn't expect the city to actually make any modifications to the, to, to that. It's more of things that we need to tuck in our head, that we need to have the context for when we're reviewing it. One thing I would ask you though, Matthew, if you could help us on, is for those areas where there are conflicts, where we got two sets of, you know, two sets of inputs that may be in conflict with each other. And if you all kind of run into a stalemate on that and can't figure out which way to go on that, if you would highlight those for us. Cause those would be the, probably the best ones that we could table then and, and really look at and dive in and say, yeah, these are in conflict, but based on everything we heard, we think the city is leaning more toward this way than that way. Is that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, we can do that. And we can provide you, um, you know, how decisions were made at the city level if you want. And then if you all think that's an inappropriate decision, obviously you can, uh, make that clear to us.
I, well, I, I think, I mean, you know, I think this is new for all of us. So I think we just kind of go forward with the best plan we can. We may, after the first or second meeting, we may adjust, have to adjust something one way or the other. Um, I don't think we're going to know, just sort of like we didn't know until we started getting into the, uh, into the, uh, public hearings. We didn't really know how that was going to go either. So I, I think we, I think we just go, go forth and give it our best shot. And if we need to adjust, well, you know, we can adjust. Any other discussion on schedule or process? Okay. Um, we're going to go ahead then and proceed with administrative comments. And, um, we'll go ahead and do board comments. We'll go around to everybody. If you have any comments, please make them. Try to hold them to, you know, no more than say three, four minutes at the most. Shannon, you got any comments you'd like to make?
Nope. I'm just excited to dive in and work diligently the next three to four months.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Melissa?
Yeah, thanks Shannon for your leadership in nominating folks. And, um, thank you, Brian, Stacy, and Jesse. I think that you will all be fantastic. And Jesse, don't doubt yourself, please. You're on so many boards. You probably have more board experience than the rest of us combined. So I think you'll be fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Stacy?
Congratulations to you, Jesse, for accepting the position. Appreciate that. And, uh, I also have, uh, comments on the growth policy for, uh, on building design review. And I don't know whether I should wait until, um, we get to that section or give my feedback at this point so that the city has time to take a look at it.
I guess is it going to require research, do you think, or is it a major change? Cause what I'd recommend is you just put it, I, I'd recommend, I'd recommend you just go ahead and provide it as a, a written statement to, to Matthew and, and CC us.
Okay.
Or, or CC the chair, let me put it that way.
Okay, I'll do that. Other, other than that, no, I don't have any other comments.
Okay. Chair Selectee Jesse, do you have any comments?
Maybe I'll just say thank you for your vote of confidence, uh, everyone. Um, I, uh, look forward to doing my very best job. Um, and thank you, Brian, for, uh, your time as the chair this past year. And I really like this board. I do serve on a lot of boards. And so I really like this board. Um, I think we are a really good team and, uh, we have a, a lot of work coming up. So I look forward to it. And I'm thankful for 2021. And, uh, and I just want to share my gratitude. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Tori, any comments?
Thanks, thanks, Brian, for your services as the chair. Um, I've only had two meetings with you all so far, but, you've, you've been a, a great leader and very organized. And, um, I think you've done a great job. And, uh, Jesse, I'm sure you'll follow in his example. And I'm sure you'll do great as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. And Taya, any comments?
Yeah, I just, I, Brian, again, I'm also new to the board, but I want to thank you, uh, for your leadership. And, um, thank you to Jesse and Stacy and Brian again for stepping up. And I know that's, it's, it's additional work, um, on top of everything you already have. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and I want to thank, uh, thank all the board members for your help, uh, over this last year, um, with me being chair. Uh, I really do appreciate it. Um, it's, uh, it can be challenging at times, but, um, but you all bring such great energy and great ideas that it makes, uh, it makes being on this board, I agree, a hundred percent fun. Uh, congratulations to our two new members, uh, Tori and Taya. I'm really excited about the expertise you bring. I really like having a county representative again, um, that we've been vacant in that position for a while. And, and it always makes me nervous that, uh, that, uh, we didn't have somebody around, uh, to kind of help us, you know, remember, uh, everybody else in the county. Congratulations, Jesse. You're going to do great. You've, you've been on this board longer than I had when I got pulled into chair. At that time, I, I'd only been in for, for eight months. Now you've got a year under your belt. So I think you're going to do great. And it sounds like you're on a lot more boards than I am. So, uh, you'll do fantastic. Uh, I'll talk with you sometime this next week and get you the super code, super secret code on, uh, getting into, uh, setting up, giving you the city accounts that you can set up the, uh, set up the meetings and, and we can talk through that. So I'll, I'll get in contact with you here shortly and we'll figure out a time we can meet and talk on that. Thank you for the community, um, uh, for all the public comments. We've gotten some outstanding input. A, a lot of input, a lot to, to go over. Um, but it, but I'm, I'm really happy that the community is taking this seriously. Cause there's nothing worse than getting this done and then having a bunch of people complain afterwards, um, because they didn't take advantage of, you know, being part of the process. So I think by including them in the process early, we're going to be able to produce a really good product that, you know, not everybody's going to be happy with, but I think the majority of the people are going to be happy with the way it looks and happy with the vision, um, for Livingston and definitely give this city, and more importantly, the commission, uh, a template on, on how to help better manage our growth. So, uh, again, I want to thank everybody. Um, next meeting will be January 20th. Again, main focus will be on the growth map, uh, excuse me, on the maps. And the, uh, we'll start the ETJ as well. Uh, so please, uh, please read ahead of time, get your, you know, read, review the comments, get, 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 uh, kind of re-smart on all that stuff. And, uh, we will adjourn this meeting. Time is 7:37. Uh, again, thank you for, for all your help and, uh, all your participation today. And have a great, uh, evening. Thank you.
Thank you.